We'd like to welcome everybody to the Liberty Hill City Council Place 3 Candidate Forum. We have with us tonight incumbent Graham Langford and Crystal Mancia, I'm sorry, both joining us for this. We appreciate you coming and doing this for us tonight. We're going to start off with opening statements and we'll start off and let Ms. Mancia open.
Thank you. My name's Crystal Mancia. I'm a single mom of three teenagers. I'm a business owner and born in Austin and raised in this area most of my life. So I have seen this city grow immensely and I know we all can feel it right now. My passion is that Liberty Hill isn't the city that people drive through, but it's the city that people want to come to, to grow their families and to be part of community. Three things that I'm passionate about is wastewater, wildly, flark spur, gray stone, they know this very well, the smell that they've been having to deal with, parks and rec, having a place where families and community can come out into nature, and then transparency. I think that every taxpayer needs to be able to see where their money is going and just for community involvement. Our job is to be here for you and to hear your voice and if you elect me, then these are the things that I promise to do.
All right, thank you. Mr. Langford, your opening comments.
Well, first of all, I'd like to start out, you know, and thank everybody who's watching currently and who will watch this. You know, voter participation is something that I hold in very high regard and I'm glad, you know, that you're taking an interest in local elections. I also like to thank the Independent, you know, for hosting this event. Mike, thank you very much. So for those of you who don't know me or my background, I have a, my lovely wife is here with me today, Shay, and last time, you know, I was talking to all of you on a stage like this, we were working on baby number three. We're currently working on number four right now. So I'm a lifelong resident, my wife and I both, of Liberty Hill. You know, we've been here our entire lives. Left for about four years, you know, to join the United States Marine Corps and serve as a combat veteran in Operation Enduring Freedom. And three things that I plan on focusing on intently upon reelection. One of those things is going to be, you know, more accountability for our city staff. We've seen some issues with that over the last couple of years. Wastewater is definitely the biggest issue that we've seen and we're implementing things to take care of that currently. Another thing is going to be economic growth and development in the area, something that was, again, lacking over the last 20 years and something that I really look forward to paying a lot of attention to going forward.
All right, thank you. So we'll start with you, Mr. Langford, with the first question. How important is it to complete work on the Unified Development Code and ultimately the Comprehensive Plan? Why has more not been accomplished on these in the past few years? And what will it take to get that work done now?
So going into this two years ago, we found out, or I found out shortly after my election, that our UDC, it was unworkable. A lot of it made no sense. It had little to no structure and along with that, we also found that a lot of the original documents that pertained, you know, at certain ordinances over the last five years were not accounted for. They were just lost. So our city secretary, our, you know, current city secretary has been working diligently to recoup those, you know, lost articles of information and that's one of the biggest things that we need in order to, you know, you know, get the UDC back to a state that's workable for our community.
Thank you. Ms. Mancia, the same question. How important is it to complete work on the Unified Development Code and ultimately the Comprehensive Plan? Why has more not been accomplished on these in the past two years in your opinion? And what will it take to get that work done?
So it's a fantastic question and I am not, I don't know what has been happening over the last two years. That's something that I would want to look into. I have not had the opportunity, you know, to do so. So I don't know really how to move forward because I haven't seen what's been done and what steps have been taken through the current city council. But that is something that I would want to look at and of course, bring in the experts to let them do their job and then to show us what we need to do in moving forward.
Okay, thank you. So the next question, we'll start with you, Ms. Mancia. How do you feel about the current city budgeting process and the management of capital improvement projects? What would you do to change or improve that process in creating the budget and prioritizing spending and capital projects?
Okay. How do I feel about that? So let me just say this. I have not really seen the budget, so I don't know where the money's been spent. I haven't had enough time to look over how the city council has been managing the money and been accomplishing city projects. I do know that there are certain projects that still are not complete and money ran out and tax notes were taken to try to complete the city projects that were put into place or voted on, I think about three, four years ago with the former city council. So things of that sort are something that I want to look into. I want to know why and if we went over budget, then to look at that and to look at each project that needs to be handled and to see how we can best move forward without still going over budget, but staying within the budget that we voted on.
Okay, thank you. Same question to you, Mr. Langford. How do you feel about the current city budgeting process and the management of capital improvement projects? What would you do to change or improve the process of creating the budget and prioritizing spending and capital projects?
So we have an excellent finance director who, you know, manages the city's money extremely well. As a council member, you know, we rely on our department directors, you know, for information. Our finance director would be the one that we rely on information as far as the budget is concerned, things that we can do, things that we cannot do. You know, as a council member, we have a particular vision of the city, you know, whether that be, you know, a current vision, a five-year plan or a 10-year plan. And essentially, we express our ideas and we get feedback from our directors on how we can go about making those things work, if it's feasible, if it's not feasible. But the process of trying to accomplish and finish a capital improvement project can be very arduous. And there's a lot of projects that are currently in, you know, that we're looking into infrastructure-wise, simply because infrastructure's been lacking over the last 20 years. And there are some projects that are currently being implemented that we're working on going forward.
Good, thank you. Okay, so the next question, we'll start with you, Mr. Langford. The city recently signed off on incentive packages for three economic development projects in Liberty Hill with incentives primarily based on sales tax and job production. When talking about economic development, should Liberty Hill put more of a premium on tax generation or job creation?
I think both are extremely important. I think sales tax revenue for the city going forward is going to be something that is extremely important. You know, we want to, I really try to emphasize our infrastructure considering the fact that it's kind of been left to the wayside for the last couple of decades. That's something that I focus a lot of attention on and the city needs money in order to do that. So sales tax revenue is something that is extremely important. Not to mention, you know, people pay pretty high property taxes and it would be my hope that we can start to generate enough sales tax revenue to where we can kind of take that burden off of our homeowners. As far as, what was the second part of the question?
Whether or not, well, it was whether or not we should put more premium on tax or job.
Or jobs. Also, I think jobs are extremely important. One of the things that, you know, I'm going to focus on over the next three years is bringing more primary jobs into the city of Liberty Hill. I'm a big believer that you should be able to live here, you should be able to work here and you should be able to spend your money here. And based on the conversations that I've had and it's been a multitude, that seems to be a pretty solid, a pretty solid view amongst, you know, our citizens.
So just briefly in addition, are there any particular types of businesses that you would like to see here in town?
Well, as far as primary jobs, really at this point, it's, it's hard to say because you have to, you have to get developers to want to come here, people to want to bring their services here, you know, build their, you know, their manufacturing facilities and what have you. And that's been somewhat of a struggle considering, you know, the population that's contained within our city limits. A lot of, a lot of these companies, they look at population size and city limits and not in the ETJ. So one of the things that we need to try to do moving forward in order to, I guess, perk up their ears and get them paying more attention to bring those primary jobs into the city is expanding the city limits and encouraging people to voluntarily annex so we can raise that, the population within city limits.
Good, thank you. So Ms. Mancia, the same question. The city recently signed off on incentive packages for three economic development projects in Liberty Hill with incentives primarily based on sales tax and job production. When talking about economic development, should Liberty Hill put more of a premium on tax generation or job creation?
I'm going to speak to what I know and as I've been looking into the growth of Liberty Hill, talking to business owners, talking to employees, let's just say waitstaff, you know, employees who may not be able to, right now, be able to afford a, you know, $300,000, $400,000 home, they're looking for places to rent. We are very low on places to rent and so bringing places of that sort, housing of that sort, I think is imperable that we do that so we can grow our jobs here in Liberty Hill. As far as bringing businesses here into Liberty Hill, I know that the council plays a role in that and just how they work with that and that negotiation with the companies and the businesses that want to come here. And so I think it is important for us to have a good sight of the vision of where Liberty Hill's wanting to go and what type of businesses we want to come, bring in here. For one, downtown Liberty Hill, I know that there's quite a few restaurants that are looking at coming down there and I'm not even sure from what I can hear and understand is if we can even, if we have the infrastructure to house that right now. So as a city, we need to look at that because if we want growth, we've got to be prepared for that. And so I think I would be looking overall if we're going to bring jobs in, make sure that jobs are, well, we have housing for jobs in sort of a rental space that where people don't have to just come to purchase a home, but they can actually rent a space. And then the sales tax, I don't, I can't speak to that right now, but that is something that I would, will definitely look into and I will do the research and post whatever I can find and a comment on this on my Facebook page. Thank you.
Just, let me ask one quick follow-up and answer. Are there any particular types of businesses that you'd like to see specifically here in town?
Yeah, I mean, I think small businesses, I would love to see more of those. Mom and pop, you know, type-run businesses that bring some sort of difference and beauty to our city. I think restaurants, like a downtown area where we have some more restaurants that are available here to us. Not your big chain ones, but things that are unique and that we can call Liberty Hill. And there's a lot of ideas out there for us to be looking at and opportunities.
Okay. Ms. Langford, you have something to add?
I just wanted to follow up on Crystal's response. So a lot of the negotiation that happens between companies that are looking to move here, a lot of that is facilitated through our Economic Development Committee, number one. Number two, I think the growth that we have, I agree with you on one point. Multipurpose housing, particularly in the downtown area, over the last couple of weeks, I've had a pretty decent amount of people come and say, you know, "Do we have more options for multipurpose housing?" And we've implemented a couple over the last couple of years that should be coming soon in the downtown area. But I would like to see, and it would appear that others would like to see also, greater availability for renters in, you know, multipurpose housing. But as far as jobs, I think based on the growth patterns that we know, you know, to be true, it would appear that we have more than enough people here to facilitate jobs. We see a lot of empty, you know, empty shops that people are going to end up putting businesses, you know, in those shops and they're going to need employees to be able to facilitate, you know, the workload. I think that we have enough people here currently to support the amount of jobs that are available and will be available in the near future.
Ms. Mancia, did you want to follow up with anything else on that topic?
No.
Okay. All right, so the next question, we'll start with you, Ms. Mancia. And I know that you've been to some recent council meetings and I know that you're at the council meetings. Can you define what you view as the current tone on the city council? And do you feel like that's acceptable? And if you don't, how would you change that? And if you do, how do you feel that it functions?
So for the council meetings that I've been a part of, I have not seen a tone of community, a tone of working together. And I invite every citizen of Liberty Hill to come and be a part of those meetings because as a council, the council is the voice for the people and we need to hear what you want to see out of your city, how you want to see this grow, what you desire out of this. And unfortunately, we don't have any citizens. I think I count maybe a total of two and sometimes three and I'm included in that. So I think there's a lack right there that we need. I do appreciate that they put them online because of the times that we're in so people can view this online and I know that sound quality is being worked on, so that's awesome. But I do invite the community to check those out because I think they're going to be able to see and feel the tone. Unfortunately, I have not seen yet. There is, in the middle of a council meeting, an executive meeting will be called in to play and everyone votes on it and they leave. And who knows how, how long is citizens supposed to sit there and wait for them while they're gone? And from the research that I've done, we're the only city that takes up so much time on executive meetings. And a city of our size, I think we can do that more effectively and honor the time of the people. And so moving forward, I hope to see that we can have a city council that will work together, that questions kind of what's brought to the table and really looks out for the best of the people. And I hope that the people will start being able to come and feeling open to coming and sharing their view of what they want out of this city and their voices. And then I really hope that executive meetings can, can start moving to where either they're right at the beginning or they're at the end. But whenever we talk about community and community involvement, let's honor the time of our citizens because we work for them.
Okay. And Mr. Langford, same question. And obviously you have two years of experience to draw from on this. Speaking more currently, but I would like to respond to it. What are your thoughts on the tone of the city council right now and is there, is there a need to change that?
So I think first what we need to establish is we need to establish the difference between the council, okay, and the mayor of the city. Now, as far as the council is concerned, the five of us, we, I would say that we work together extremely well. I think that we're probably the most diverse council that we've ever had in the city of Liberty Hill. And it's actually very, very healthy. We all come from, you know, different places. We all have, you know, different levels of thinking, different ways to approach situations. And I think combating things, you know, and bringing multiple different perspectives to every situation helps us to make the best possible decision, you know, whenever we go and we decide to make a choice or vote for a particular item. I have seen some, I guess what some would call tension between the mayor and particular council members. To me, I think that debate is a very healthy aspect of the political element, especially, you know, of being an elected official. Debate is something that you need because if everybody just coincides to the same type of opinion, then it tends to wind up not being the outcome that you would have hoped later on down the road after many of these decisions have been made.
Good, thank you.
Can I add something to that?
Yes, ma'am.
So I agree. I think debate is very important. I think diversity is very important. I think one thing that's lost is being able to do that and still respect one another. And again, I go back to inviting every citizen to go back and look online at the council meetings. And I'm only going to speak for what I have seen, but it is disrespectful to our mayor at times and I do not see the working together there. And so I believe that we can be diverse. I do believe that we can disagree and agree to disagree and yet still do that very respectfully with one another. That's all I'd like to say.
Did you want to respond, Mr. Langford?
With respect to that response, I respect all the council members. I respect our mayor. As many know, I won an election against her two years ago and then she ran for mayor and became the mayor. Her and I have a pretty good relationship. I wouldn't say it's anything of an extremely personal nature, but we both have respect for one another and we respect our positions very well. Again, as far as the lack of respect, that is a perspective that people have about a particular council member or a couple of particular council members, I would think. And, you know, I would like to see, I guess, a bit more cordial behavior. But again, you know, to that point, debate is healthy. And I also, at the same time, agree with you on the point that I invite every citizen to come to every meeting. Be informed, get the information for yourselves and talk to your council members about the things that you see, the things that you hear, the information that you gather because it helps us to facilitate your needs and your wants.
Thank you. All right, so we're ready for our final question of the evening and we're going to start this question with Mr. Langford. So the question is, a number of projects over the last three years have finished significantly over budget, including renovations to the municipal court building and changes with the wastewater treatment plant expansion. What is being done or what can be done to curb such cost overruns in the future and keep projects on budget?
So with any project, I would say that there is, there is going to be some spillover. There's change orders that come into play. I don't necessarily agree with the way over budget part of that comment. But going over budget on a project is something that oftentimes happens simply because certain aspects of the project change once you, you know, actually start constructing it. But I do agree that being responsible with our tax dollars is of the utmost importance. And I think that honestly, one of the best ways that we can try to really rein back the over expenditures of projects would be accountability of our, of our city staff. I mean, a lot of it has to do with our inspectors, a lot of it has to do with communication between the contractor and our city planning department, you know, or our city administrator. So I think communication is a, is a big, big factor and it's something that has been looked at time and time again. We know that it's an active issue and we're working to mitigate, you know, those problems going forward.
All right, thank you. Ms. Mancia. A number of projects over the last three years have finished significantly over budget, including renovations at the municipal court building and changes to the wastewater treatment plant expansion. What can be done to curb such, such cost overruns in the future and keep projects on budget?
So it's a great question. It's definitely one of my passions and this is, is the budget because it is the taxpayers' dollars that we're talking about and how it's being spent. When I think of the word over or the phrase over budget, I, as a business owner, I look at, you know, my own business and running a business. And if I'm a little bit over budget, you know, sometimes that does happen, just like Graham had said. Being a little over budget can happen, but significantly, that's where, you know, you start kind of questioning, how is the money being utilized and spent? From what I have heard, we are three times over, over budget on wastewater. That seems pretty significant to me. And so my question now is why? And in two years, why has it just been kind of going on? Why have we not taken a look at it? I know Graham had mentioned accountability of staff, but I, I'm not even sure, like, I think of that too. If it's the staff that is, needs accountability, why are we waiting until now to take a look at it? And so when I look at, you know, three times over budget with wastewater, to me, I'm going to the person in charge of that and asking them, "I need to see the budget. I need to see where the money's been spent and why." Those are things that I haven't been able to look at yet. I haven't been able to really see exactly where taxpayers' dollars are going, but it's something that is very, very important to me to be able. And, you know, I think about the school district. So the school district can show you exactly where every dollar from the bonds are going to. And I would kind of put out there, why would the city not want to do that? You know, we're talking about taxpayers' monies. Let's talk about where is that money being spent and how much really got spent on that project. Let's, let's show them so that way they know, especially since we're overseeing that. It's our job to do that.
Okay. All right, well, that's all the questions we had, so it's time for our closing comments and we'll start with you, Ms. Mancia.
Thank you. First, I want to just thank you, Mike Edelman, for your time today and for leading us in this forum and Liberty Hill Independent. And thank you to the two fellows doing the sound and the quality here video. Thank you, Graham, for your time. I know you and your wife are very busy with little ones, so I know how important that is when they're young. And then to the citizens of Liberty Hill, I want to tell you thank you for your time, for getting involved. I think it's time to start getting involved. It's time to start seeing and being a part of the city because we are at a crossroad where we're growing so fast. And we need to start paying attention and making some changes and doing things now. The time is now. And we need your voice, we need your vote. And my promise to you is that I will be transparent with you. I will look into the three things that I had mentioned with wastewater, transparency of budgets and, and parks and rec. And I'm going to be in communication on my Facebook page, so if you'd like to connect with me there to see where my passion is and how I want to serve this community and as I'm finding out answers for you, you can find me there and ask me any questions that you'd have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Langford, your closing comments.
Well, again, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody that's, you know, watching this video or will be watching it. I think it's very, very important for all of us to stay focused on our city government and, you know, we need voter participation. And also, thank, thank you to the Independent, Mike. Thank you, you know, for being here and hosting this event. I've been thinking a lot about this and, you know, two, two years ago, we voted for a change. And we've seen that change over the last two years. You know, we, we have brought new companies in to build here, to create jobs here. We've increased our sales tax revenue. We have developed our infrastructure. And all of those things are just beginning. We still have a very long way to go and I think it's extremely important that we continue to elect people who are going to stay focused on the things that are important and not allow them to fall to the, to the wayside and be forgotten. As we all know, over the last 20 years, our town has, has been severely, severely neglected. And I think over the last two years, you know, we've seen a change. Let's continue that change.
All right, thank you. I'd like to thank both of you on behalf of the community for, for stepping up and volunteering to do this. It's not easy, we know that. And, and on behalf of the Independent, we'd like to thank both of you for participating in this tonight. I know it's also not always easy. We'll remind everybody that early voting begins on April 19th and Election Day is May 1st and, and then it'll all be over then, so.
We look forward to seeing all of you.
Yes.
Thank you very much and have a great evening.